Everybody was so tuned in on the natural gas stuff. I guess all of the recent editorials and press about that. Well, I think we are all here. So well, as you're getting settled, I'll just kind of get this off. The agenda is posted. We also have, so the first item is just minutes from our. We have all three of the counselors here. Just getting started walking through the agenda, which the first item is the minutes from the last meeting. I would accept a motion to approve the minutes. All those in favor? And then we do have public comments right up front. I do not see anybody slated for public comment, but I will make a call out there just in case I might have missed anybody that is wanting to speak to the subcommittee. So that takes us to our main item, which is the American Rescue Plan Act allocation of funding. So Carolyn Egan is going to be leading us through a presentation. And what I'm looking for from this subcommittee is just general direction on the allocation. Also to kind of truce some things up from the previous allocation and really chart a course for what the next year plus looks like. So remember from the federal, from the treasury guidelines, we have until 2024 to spend these resources. And I think we want to be really cautious about using this, this added resource from the federal government in a way that sustains us over time. So we'll talk about that. And then if we have some time at the end, I also just want to check in with you all about council goals. We presented the goals to you in the work session last week or at the quarterly update. So if there's any reflections, we did receive some suggested edits from Council Rodman, which we've incorporated, if I can share those, but if there's other things you'd like to talk about, we can do that as well. All right. So I'm going to turn it over to Carolyn to lead us in the presentation.
Good morning, everyone. It's good to see you all. I should have just come over. I'm just across the street. But I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Bear with me for a moment, just while I get everything squared away.
You're welcome to come over, Carolyn, if you want.
I'm already set up, so I think I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go with it, if that's okay. It's just gonna be funny because my head's gonna be like turned away a little bit, but that's okay. Everyone can see the screen, I'm assuming. Okay. So what we're here to talk about today is really that next, the allocation of the next seven million. But because some people viewing may have just be starting from the beginning, I'm just gonna do a handful of review slides. And then we'll start really talking about where we are with the first allocation and then what we have to allocate as part of the next seven million. So everyone, those watching, everyone remember that we have the American Rescue Plan Act. It allocated lots of money to lots of different things. The most important thing for us was what was allocated to state and local recovery funds. And so you'll see that we, we're really talking about the 2.6 billion that was allocated to Oregon. And then specifically the 14 million that was allocated just to the city of Bend. And we have this timeline that many of you will remember, but we got the first payment last May. And then we were slated to get the second payment this May. We're on track to get it. And that's what we're talking about specifically. And you'll see that we, when we allocated that money, we really were thinking about council goals and equity and all the things that really were top of mind last year. And just how slightly that that conversation has changed in the next year. You'll really see as we talk about what's proposed for the next round of allocations. And so here we are, I think, to review, we definitely council goals as we thought about that first seven million of allocating in ARPA funds. But there was a handful of other things that really did become part of the conversation. And I think these are important for us to remember, but also for our community members to understand is that the city has overriding fiscal policies, which really always tells us to use the most restrictive funds first. They might be funds that we use that are restricted because of use, or like ARPA funds, they're restricted because of use and time. We also made a real effort. We didn't want to duplicate funding. So if there was, for example, there were state projects or state programs or state grant programs for specifically for the travel and tourism industry. And so as we were thinking about how we wanted to allocate our funds, we didn't want to duplicate those funds. We also wanted to make sure that we were, as we identified projects, for example, the outdoor shelters, then we wanted to go out, make sure that we were looking for funds that would also help those projects. And then also where we could, if we were funding a project, that was great, but it might make sense for a partner agency to come and fund a different part of that project as we grew. So this balance of using our council goals, using our fiscal policies, but also using some guiding principles that we created specifically for the types and variety of projects that we saw happening with the ARPA funding as seed funding. So you'll remember this. You've all seen this. We're doing a really good job actually of allocating funds this way. But there's two conversations that I wanted to really highlight for you three and then also for the community at large about what changes have been made, maybe informally and formally, to this original allocation of the first seven million of ARPA funding. So really specifically, when we started, when we talked about the ARPA funds back in May, we actually talked about $1.5 million to manage camps. And pretty much the next month, we started talking about a better, what's a better descriptor of managed camp? Should we be talking about them as outdoor shelters? We saw that language be woven into our shelter code changes and all of our language that we've used as we talk about shelters and the types of shelters we need in Bend. And then we really started talking a little bit about, well, should that 1.5 million be allowed to be used for all types of shelter operations, not just the managed camps? Especially in light of the county coming in and supporting the outdoor shelter, the managed camp opportunity that's before us. So do we want to make sure that we're using those funds as opportunistically as possible, but also keeping in line with the original allocation? So this is also a great opportunity for me to bring a quick update on what's happening with the outdoor shelters. So you'll all remember that we did a RFP for a managed camp operator, outdoor shelter operator. We have issued an intent to award to Central Oregon Villages. And we have been working diligently with Central Oregon Villages to put together a scope of work for their Phase One contract. The location of an outdoor shelter has been sort of the most difficult part of all of this work. And so Central Oregon Villages has been working diligently to identify locations, which changed. It was a course change from where we started. Originally, we believed that the city would find the locations and then we would ask Central Oregon Villages to manage that land on this sort of as a separate contract. What's happening is they're having some success actually identifying land. And so at this point, we believe the Phase One contract for one or more locations will actually be for the management and also cover some of their lease obligations because they'll secure the land. And so the city won't be involved in even that, in even that lease contract. And it is the lease negotiations from Central Oregon Villages that is taking more time. And so that's the primary reason for the delay in bringing that Phase One contract to council. And the other change that council approved, and this was a subcommittee approval, and then I believe it got, it was decided by resolution, is that we moved 300 or 130,000 from reserve to the Community Assistance Grant so that we could fund three more Community Assistance Grants. So that means our actual initial funding allocation for the first seven million looks more like this, where we had 330,000 go to Community Assistance Grants. We just put 1,070,000 in reserves. And then I think the question I have, and I'm going to stop, is that is there agreement from this committee that that 1.5 million be allowed to be used for outdoor shelter operations, but also any shelter operations as we move forward?
If eligible, yes.
Yeah, yeah, oh, it is.
Yeah. And Carolyn, the rainbow purchase was general fund, right? It was not using the first seven million dollars. And in general, we think the rainbow purchase would have been ARPA eligible?
Well, I think we have, because we have long-term needs to, you know, for our own facility needs. And we'll talk about flexibility with ARPA and taking like the exemption. We'll talk about that. But we're really, we wanted as much flexibility as possible.
So I just mean like, if we had used it, if we had purchased it using ARPA dollars, we think at this point, for the purposes that we've identified, it would probably be eligible, right?
Yes, with a caveat, and Carolyn can talk about that kind of exception language here in a second.
So really specifically, Council Rodman, if using the original ARPA eligibility guidance from treasury, buying a property for a shelter would have, would be fine. But buying a property for general services needs or the city's general facility needs would have been a harder, a harder line to draw. But we have new information from the treasury, which would allow us to draw that line, but we have not. We have chosen to purchase the rainbow with general funds for the city's future facility needs. So we're okay with this. I just, this is one thing, I think we probably will have to note this somewhere in the official record. I don't know if it's when we do the budget adjustment in June or Eric, but making sure we make that change, that that allowance for the 1.5 million is more broad than originally approved.
Yeah, and I will, I think all of today's discussion will help lead us towards that supplemental budget that's coming before council in June. So, yeah, we'll be sure to reflect that change there.
So this, I just wanted to give you an update. We're doing a great job at spending the federal money. Everything that we have designated is underway. I suspect that when we get to, after we get through the June budget adjustment, maybe there will be a little bit of room for some salary savings because we had positions. We'd had 900,000 that went to specific positions. And then we had 1.6 million that went, that was eliminated positions. So there could be some room in there, but at this point, we are saying there is not. And every other place, we feel pretty confident that the funding you've designated for these, these uses will be spent. So you're talking about 1.5 million, maybe there's 150 somewhere. Even with the 900 for salaries, maybe there's 75,000 somewhere. But really, at this point, we feel like there's not additional money to reallocate from any of that original, original decision at this point. So when we talk about allocating the next tranche of funding, we have the seven million that is coming into the bank from the treasury, and then we have that 1,070,000 that was originally put in reserves. So here's the change. And Tracy and Michael are on, and they're going to jump in and correct me as soon as I say something. So we'll even, we'll just pause and let that happen if that, if that's needed. But originally, the treasury provided us, when we did this original budget adjustment, we really only had FAQ. We didn't have final treasury guidance. And you'll remember that the treasury guidance allowed us to fund in these specific categories. What has happened since then is this category of revenue replacement has become much clearer about how the treasury is going to allow us to, you, to count or account for or report on revenue replacement. And they're allowing every ARPA recipient to take a $10 million standard allowance, which means we, we don't have to show that we had $10 million in lost revenue. They're just saying, we will let you take it. And what that does is instead of having to put projects or programs or staff in place to meet the eligibility requirements that's on the left side of your screen, we actually have much more broader spending categories. And general government services doesn't get any broader than that. And Council Rodman, that, that would be if we wanted to use ARPA funds to purchase the rainbow for our general facility needs, that's how we would get there. That's the path we would get there. So in this case, we have, as we move forward with the next tranche of funding, we have much broader guidelines that we need to follow to be able to allocate that funding, which really allows us not just to continue to support the parts of our community or the individuals in our community that were most impacted by the COVID recession, but really allow us to plan for what the city's going to need after December 2024, when the ARPA funding time has, has come to an end. So what we're recommending to you is that we will go ahead and we will report 4,76,000 of this under the original ARPA eligibility. And we're going to be fine. All the shelter operations, all the childcare, anything related to workforce, anything related to utility assistance and any staffing that was directly related to recovery is clearly an eligible expense. And then it allows us to do $10 million under that road construction or general government services. So really broad, it really reduces Tracy's obligations around reporting so that we, we can really streamline a lot of these internal tracking and reporting processes that we have going forward. So we have gotten some requests for some money, as you can imagine. And so the next couple of slides are the requests that we've received combined with the requests from staff for the next seven million. We did make sure that any of them fit into these guiding principles. And so continuing to make sure that we use the most restrictive fund first. We don't duplicate funding anywhere and that we continue to work with partner agencies to have them go after funding that makes sense for the projects that we've initiated. And also make sure that we start thinking about how we create some sustainable funding sources. So the first request is from our friends over at the county. We have asked them, along with many other partners, that they start to think about not just a place for stabilization, but really non-law enforcement crisis intervention or crisis response. So they're asking us for two years of funding for an FTE to begin to build out that crisis response team. So that when calls come in to law enforcement that really are not law enforcement calls, but in fact are mental health or addiction or other crisis response, they'll begin to have that team built out. The next is from the city of Bend Police Department, and this is building out the Core Three. For those of you who've been following along what is happening at COIC, but this is really starting to think about the Cascadia event and other training and other resiliency response needs that law enforcement, all law enforcement, all public safety, from emergency services to fire, police, even to our streets department at times, have to respond to. So the city of Bend had agreed to participate in this. The first year is 59, we're asking, they're asking for $59,000 and then 100,000 for each of the next year's contributions to the Core Three project. And this is a physical space, and it's really meant to be a place where we regionally can start to begin to coordinate how we respond to all sorts of emergencies more effectively. So these are two requests that really fall under that sustainable funding. So the first, you heard a presentation from Eric and Sharon just a week ago or less than a week ago for the fire, the Fire Service District. So this is a $1.8 million requested ARPA funds to support them till they get to their next bond. So it's the, there's the rural fire district contribution, the city contribution. And so we're asking for a portion of the city contribution come from ARPA funds. And then the other is a much smaller request, but it's really looking to January 2025. And what additional revenues or resources do we need to have as a city in place so that we can continue to provide city services at the level that our community's gotten used to after all those ARPA funds? So just a little bit of seed money to think about what, what work we need to do internally for all, in all the departments of the city to be thinking about new revenue post, post ARPA. The next request is from COIC in Cascade East Transit. You may remember several summers ago, we had Ride Bend. And the goal was during the summer months to provide a way for people to move around without having to necessarily move their car and park every time they wanted to do the next recreational activity. And so COIC has asked us for two summers of funding for a total of $100,000.
Wait, the request says two, it says 200,000?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, it should be one. I'm sorry.
Lots of two, sorry. And then the final request is from us. We're requesting that we set $4 million in ARPA money aside so that we can initiate that initial contract with Neighbor Impact this fall after the renovations are done at the former Bend Value Inn. So it's a placeholder so that we have the funds. We know we can enter into that contract with Neighbor Impact to run that shelter. But this is the prime example of where we are always looking, we're constantly looking for other sources of funding. You'll remember that Project Turnkey, pretty important program of the state. And so many of the state agencies that other, that would typically be funding shelter operations or housing operations, they are all allocating funding to Project Turnkey. And so we imagine that we not, we won't need to use all of this by the end. But right now, in order to be able to put that first contract in place this fall with Neighbor Impact, we need to have the funding dedicated. So the request is for that dedicated funding that will get us through December 2024 if we never got another dime from other sources, which is the opposite of what we expect. So that gets us to a total of, so the total amount we had to allocate or reallocate is just over $8 million if we take that money out of reserves. So the total request is just at six, 6.6 million. And that will allow us to put just under 1.4 million in reserves. Just so we can sort of see what happens for that. And that is the end of my presentation. I can leave it on this slide for discussion or whatever best fits.
Yeah, turn it back over to the subcommittee to just get some, any questions first, any clarification needed, and then just a discussion on the plan that was presented.
I have a question about the Stabilization Center and the moral crisis. Is that, I mean, is that enough to really get anything going to just have one person hired?
Well, they, so that was supplemental. So they are already planning to hire a couple of other folks. This would just be one additional, one additional position. It's not the position.
So on that item, I mean, I'm generally comfortable with that. I just want to make clear that our contribution, if we agree, is contingent on the civilian response being part of, you know, our community's tools that we have.
Absolutely.
I want to, I'm happy to make this contribution, but what I want to hear in response from the Stabilization Center, the county, is that they know that this money is contingent on a civilian response.
And we've expressed that as well. And so we would have to sign an intergovernmental agreement that would come to council. So you'll all get to review that language to make sure it's.
Yeah, I just don't want to, I don't want to send you or Carolyn down this road of like, here's this money. We're all in on the Stabilization Center. I'm not unless we come together as a community and recognize that an unarmed, you know, an unarmed response to crises is the appropriate, sometimes the appropriate response in our community. And then if we're serious about it, we have to fund that.
Yeah, and probably fund it expanded beyond this initial, you know, seed money. But this is a start in that direction. And then we'll kind of assess what's needed in order to expand that to meet the community need in the future.
Agreed. Because we've held, I feel like we've held back from our council's collective goal of something that looks like what other communities have done, whether you call it cahoots or whatever they're doing in Portland. We want something different here, and I think this gets us there more quickly and more sustainably. But I want to make sure the county understands our role.
And I will be sure to negotiate that as part of the.
I was curious to hear just a little bit more about the Core Three projects. The pictures weren't very descriptive, so I just wanted to kind of understand what the main focal areas are for that emergency response.
Yeah, so a unique project that has been under, planning has been underway for the last couple of years. It's being led by COIC, the Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council. And it's a, really intended to be a large training facility. Land has been dedicated at the airport. That's owned by the Shutes County. The, as part of all the allocation, the earmarking that took place in the legislature, there was close to 10 million that was allocated to that project from the state. So now there's, this project is gaining momentum. The whole model behind it is for all the agencies to contribute, police, fire, towards the kind of operation. So there's kind of a, all, there's many more agencies beyond just the city of Bend that's part of that. So it's just our proportionate share.
It's a huge project.
Yeah, he probably has the.
Yeah, from CYC, and it's, I'm glad we're looking at it, whether, whether we're contributing. I'm curious about how the, the ratio of contributions have been asked for. Because this is a regional project. I want to make sure that the city is getting value for this. I suspect it is, but.
It's right now just based on a population.
Yeah.
And so since we're roughly half of the population here, just in Dishes County, you know, are, we have a larger proportionate share based on that.
And this, that it's reflected by the fact that there's a huge, huge portion of this funding is coming from the state in recognition of the fact that in the event of a Cascadia type of event, we're going to need that.
Yeah, we're going to be the central kind of response area. Yeah.
And it's also a cost-saving measure right now. We have to send all of our folks to Salem for training. So the Department of Public Safety and Standards, TPSST, training in Salem, right? I'll just give you an example. There is a backlog to get our police officers trained. We can't get anybody into the academy until the fall. And so having something on this side of the mountains, really, not only for the tri-county area, but really east of the Cascades, is going to benefit us from not having to send people across the mountains for that training.
Thanks.
So, I mean, can we contribute some other items that we think should be included here?
Yeah, if there's, I mean, there is money in reserves that we've set aside. Or maybe before we get there, just any questions, concerns around the proposal that Carolyn has outlined?
I mean, I've always thought that we are not entitled to, but should expect state partnership on turnkey. So I don't, I don't want to commit to a number that will prevent us from getting funding from the state moving forward or from other sources. This is my only thought on turnkey.
Yeah, Carolyn, you want to elaborate?
Yeah, I agree with you. I think one of the things, the way I was attempting to present this and may not have done it well, is that we really want to make sure that we can enter into a three-year contract. So with the NAV Center, we entered into a three-year contract with Shepherd's House with the ability to renew twice for two more years. So another four years. We'd like to be able to enter into a similar contract with Neighbor Impact for turnkey. And to be able to do that, we have to have the sort of the budget allocated. This allows us to do that. And then what, already what's happening is as new money comes in, we're replacing it. So if you wanted to do a smaller amount, I don't think there's too much risk to that. But I didn't want to in any way inhibit our ability to enter into that contract, that longer contract with Neighbor Impact. So they really do have the time and the runway to do the capacity billing and building and the staffing. They need to run the shelter well. They need to run the shelter well. So it's just a trade-off.
And I will say, our eyes are on this challenge and we're not alone. All the other mid-size cities in Oregon face the same sort of dynamic where they've used a lot of their ARPA funds to increase shelter capacity. And we're very concerned about those funds running out. And so we are, in fact, we have a retreat plan here in Bend, all of the mid-size cities later this in May. And our number one goal for the 23 legislative session is to advocate for sustainable funding for all this additional capacity. So we're going to really try hard not to be spending those resources. And we have partners with us to advocate for that. But I think we need to, we need to make sure that we don't, we spend a lot of time and effort putting these facilities in place. We want to make sure that we are leveraging what we have to offer some sense of a sustainable future for our providers. Specifically, our providers, I think the last thing they need right now is to be on this circle where contractor having anxiety around that, are they doing operations?
Eric, I can provide a quick example, just so the counselors feel a little bit more sure that our partners are in this with us. So we, you know, you know that we're doing the temporary operations at Division Street before we did the revision. So we had a contract with Neighbor Impact that we were going to pay for those. And the first pay for those temporary operations, temporary shelter operations, the first two invoices we got from them showed a credit. And because they use their ESG funds to, to pay for the operations. So we had the contract in place. We, they could have invoiced us for the $100,000 or so over the month and a half. And instead they use money they already had in-house that was perfectly able to be used for shelter operations. So it really, it's a strange dynamic. We're not used to the, having this dynamic because we don't typically fund shelter operations. But it allows us to enter into those contracts and then work with those partners to find other funds. So we haven't spent a dime yet on Division Street operations.
Wow.
Wow.
And then if other funds do become available, those funds can be reallocated.
So either we get them or they get them or someone else, or Reach gets them for the project. And then it reduces the costs month to month for the case management or the food service or, or whatever we're doing there.
Gwen, actually, I think it would be good to maybe sort of brainstorm some things that you would like to see. Cause there could be some additional funds beyond just the 1.3 available from reserves. Pending that, you know, that scenario that Carolyn just mentioned, if that plays out with turnkey, we could have those resources available. So let me hear your ideas.
And we have the million from the last round of reserves.
That's being carried forward. Okay, that's, that's in that.
So, and the, the key thing for me about this is this will, expenditures of these will enter into our next goals, right? We don't have to spend these in this biennium.
No, correct. We have until 2024.
Right, so we have, I mean, I think it's key that we focus on funding goals that we've identified and council as, as a whole directed the city to fund, right? So I have three things that I think are goal-based. I mean, core three, I'm not sure that is part of a goal, but I see there's some ways to fit that into our goal of, you know, having training closer to home, having effective government. I would like to see us, even though we have freedom on eligibility, given the $10 million exemption. I would like to see us continue to focus on the negative economic impacts of COVID. I think we're still dealing with those right now. And so the automated traffic enforcement bill that the city advocated for in Salem and got passed. I would like to see us, maybe not in this biennium, but in the next biennium fund, studying of actually implementing that and using that here. I would love for it to happen in this biennium. I'm not sure we have the bandwidth to do it. But I would like to allocate some towards that. I think that we, we have empty law enforcement positions. We have difficulty hiring. One of the things we can do in our community is use technology to make roadway safer because we don't have as many law enforcement officers to do all of the traffic patrols we would want. So I would love to see us allocate some. But I think we could use it in terms of purchase and implementation. I don't think we have the high-end resources to complete the project. But I would like to see a study and do feasibility and move towards automated traffic enforcement. The other thought I had is we've struck, we've, so council passed the direction for a design alternative on the bikeways or greenway, enhanced greenways. I think now based on, you know, gas is $4.70 a gallon. I would love to see us fund, you know, wayfinding or wayfinding and signage for those key routes that are sort of a hybrid between our bond projects and the design alternatives that council directed in December for the crosstown key routes or southeast-west. Even if we don't finish it with ARPA money, I would love to see us take a crack at that. And then I've seen other, the third item, I've seen other communities doing needs-based e-bike rebates. So I would, and again, I don't know the magnitude of what we could do here, but we could do a pilot. And we should, based on our goal of electrifying the transportation system. Love to see us, you know, contract out with a, you know, a sort of community benefit organization or a nonprofit to do a pilot e-bike rebate program based on need, based on folks who can't afford the same level of electrification of vehicles right now that we know we need in our community. And then, and then back to the wayfinding, I mean, I'm, I'm cognizant of the fact we're not going to, this is a small piece of that. But I would love to see us use the equity mapping tool that we've, you know, we finalized and learned a lot more about the areas of our community that we're not getting the same level of service to, or historically they weren't. Love to see us base our, you know, wayfinding and signage for those key routes based on the equity mapping and the, the areas of our community that need it most. Those are just my three things, because I've heard other communities looking at these types of uses of ARPA. And then the stabilization center contingent on the, you know, the unarmed civilian response. But I think we've already covered that.
I'd like to see the, you know, the two, the 200, I can't remember, that we allocated down. And what sort of went to BDA for, for some childcare. And, you know, there's subcommittee of BDA funded, you know, really excellent uses to support childcare. I mean, talk about something that's been affected by, you know, by COVID and by the pandemic. I would like to see if we could continue that process. And there's more organizations in town that we could partner with to, to work on this really big crisis that we're having right now.
Was it your impression that there was more need than they were able to?
I think there's, I mean, there's just, yeah, there's just more need in general, yeah. Yeah, and I think they did an excellent job of, of, you know, finding a couple of programs, you know, that really allocated the money in a really smart way.
And I would just jump in that childcare is one, was one of the governor's initiatives, just like workforce. So I think letting that, I, I agree that there's never going to be enough money in childcare. But I think maybe we, that's a good one where we watch and see what, what else we could be like, how far that funding is coming for the childcare providers and what we can do to build. Because I want to, it'd be interesting to see what, what that big tranche of money that's been allocated to childcare statewide will do. And what the limits are.
Neighbor Impact had 8 million in this class.
Yeah.
And we may just fundamentally have different approaches to how we want to fund childcare. So there, you know, the state may come, you know, two-thirds of the way and we, and we want to fill in that third. We still have 100,000 in general fund that's allocated in the business advocacy budget ahead of all the ARPA money. And then there's still about 45,000 that's left from what that original 250. So I think there's room like for council to say, hey, Ben, keep working on it. You have 140, tell us what you want to do with it. And then, and then we can see, that'll give this neighbor impact in the state some time to, to get their programs and projects underway.
That makes sense.
And in the, in the first tranche of dollars, I mean, we shouldn't forget all of the investments we've made. Downtown planning, childcare. In terms of building and engineering, we've, you know, I know the city has looked at contracting out with entities to help clear the logjam we have in building and engineering. So just because we're not talking about it in this tranche, I, I know we all feel the same that we've, we've made some really significant investments in the first $7 million. And this is success we can build on, I think.
So I've got that kind of list to go from, so just make sure I have it correctly. The automated traffic enforcement's implementation as a possible use of this design alternative or wayfinding, I'm sorry, for signage for key routes. I'm just going to give the basic headlines here. There was more detail that went into it. And then exploration of e-bike rebates kind of at the local level. And then Megan mentions the childcare as a continued focus. Any sort of, and I, I guess I would ask the question, I mean, right now we're saying there's some uncertainty about what that amount would be. We need to get through that, the contract with our service providers. So it might be something we just kind of revisit that list after we have a little more certainty and then we can sort of start putting some dollars to that. But that's, it gives us a place to start from.
Yeah, I like the ideas that you brought up and.
Have we heard from Lynn if there are any sort of gaps that we need to be filling there, that we could be filling there?
On what? Housing?
On housing.
Oh, on housing?
Yeah.
So we have done the middle income housing. And I think we're, as part of our reallocation of some of the, like, the salary settings that's going into housing. So I think we're doing, we just met last week, we have a strategy, internal strategy session. So we asked that very question. So right now I think the answer is yes, but I appreciate that maybe putting that on the list too. And case, more is, because we're still in the process of really digging into that middle income housing need. So the resource needs are clearly defined quite yet. So we're putting that on there to watch.
Yeah, I mean, that's, talk about council goals.
Right. And certainly if turnkey turns out the way it should. I mean, I think we, we need to have a real heart-to-heart with our partners in Salem. And if, if turnkey turns out the way it should, and that, that frees up another $4 million or some portion of that $4 million to, you know, reimburse ourselves essentially. Because the state should be funding its promise to us to be a partner in, in serving our houseless neighbors. I would love to see a big, significant investment in the same thing, at the same level. Whatever we save on turnkey, let's, let's make a big dent in social housing and do the kinds of things we've done in, on Stevens Road where
Exactly.
we acquire land that we know is sorely needed for, you know, middle and affordable housing. And then partner, you know, with, with private public partnership to show that we can have these kinds of social housing projects that work in Bend like we've done, like we've already done, I think, already on Stevens Road. Or 3318, whatever we're calling it. So let's, let, I mean, I know that everybody's working as hard as we can to get that turnkey project of sustainable funding, but if the state steps up, that to me should still be housing.
Yeah, and equally as important, you know, to, to be creating that kind of.
Well, I think that aligns well with some of the internal things that we're doing just from organizational structure perspective, as we've created the housing department. We're really kind of seeing three main pieces of that versus the shelter operations that, as we've acquired the facilities, we want ongoing relationships and facility management, and that's a body of work. And there's the, our, what has been our, sort of bread and butter, the affordable housing need restricted. And then middle income housing is starting to form. And so there will be some requests for FTE and some shifting of resources that will be part of the supplemental budget in June. So I think we're aligned there. And I'm hearing what you all seem to be nodding your heads on of just when we look at any, to keep that all within that realm with these resources as well. So if something, we have some money saved over here, let's make sure we just continue to apply it. Cause there's needs in all three of those areas, shelters, affordable housing and middle income.
Right.
And we want to, if we can shift the resources around, great, but let's not deploy them elsewhere.
Right.
Okay.
And just, and just one other thing in terms of, I understand how like we've done, we did our downtown supplemental budget and it's, we've, this, everybody in this organization is working so hard. There's just not, there's just not bandwidth and people to get everything that you all want to get done, that we all want to get done. So to the extent any of these initiatives, we can use third-party contracting. I'm just as one person all for it. If it means it, it costs another 2% or 3% or some other percent more. Let's have those conversations in order to get the things, you know, get these initiatives done. Because I, I realize everybody's wearing like so many different hats and has so much work on their desks.
All right, I have what I need to follow up from, from this conversation. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Carolyn.
Thanks, Carolyn.
All right, and then just as I mentioned, we have a little time left. If there's any other feedback that you wanted to, or any discussion you wanted to have on the council goals and following up from our quarter we had took last week.
What did you send to Eric?
And I, I have.
I can.
I'll email it.
No, no, it was very small. You know, one thing, I think they were, I think Russ had suggested moving the community benefit contracting component to a principal. But Gwen has made so much progress on that and is moving towards implementation of community benefit contracting based on the state law that allows us to do that. I, I just suggested to Russ that we move that to an action item because it's almost done.
Right.
And we've, we've tested it now on two projects. So, and then the other item was based on council's vote in December on the design alternative for the crosstown key routes. Updating our key route goal to include that we're protected or as protected as possible. Because that was part of council's action was not just, you know, kids walking, good luck. It was, we want to get kids and any vulnerable user around this city safely. So adding a word protected.
Makes sense.
I just sent you, we cooperated and, well, I sent it to Megan and Jenna. I've used, we've, I'll send it back to Anthony.
But you already updated it?
Yeah.
And then I think that the staff should, I think that the goal of whatever would include the fact that you've entered into contracts with third parties to help us with building and engineering, that that should be reflected as a, an achieved goal, I think. I think the fact that staff has moved in that direction is an achievement. It wasn't in the goal, so I want to make sure that the goal reflects the fact that we are clearing the logjam and building and engineering.
What is a language access program?
So that's something that's obviously been working on. He just presented to leadership team and we're really creating a more comprehensive. So that are all of, everything that we produce, we kind of put through a filter about the need for translation services. So it's, and it's, it's comprehensive, right? It could be multi-language, so it's, it's just more programmatic.
Okay. Eight. So the task force is taken out because of the potential partnership with the mobile crisis. Okay, yep.
And that to me, I mean, just for me, I, I want us to move away from this idea of, I mean, we should continue to work with our partners in nonprofits, but getting this done quicker if this is a government responsibility. For too long in this country, we've shifted all of the burden for crises to nonprofits and churches and things like that. And we have a government-sized issue on our hands. So I like the fact that we're moving it into
I agree.
our responsibility on this crisis response.
Well, and we're, we'll continue to have it. So don't feel like you're, the pressure's on to come up with the changes now. Please just feed us back. And this is just to give you a little time and space. We, we mentioned this just last week that we, we have these, we have both the storage chip today, and then we have community building on Wednesday. So we're just kind of providing space in both committee meetings to chat about it.
Okay.
All right. Well, I think that is it. I don't know. I don't, I don't do the move to adjourn. We don't usually do meetings like that. If you want to, just for satisfaction. So thank you, everybody.
Thanks.